Good evening, I would like to call this meeting to order, may I have approval of the agenda please? All those in favor? Mr. Baskin, can I have a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, we would like to remind our families that the school district of Beloit's winter break begins at the end of the school day Friday, December 22nd. Classes will resume on Tuesday, January 2nd. Due to the holidays and limited staffing, the Colak Center will be closed for the public business during this time. Reopening on Tuesday, January 2nd. There are still a number of winter concerts taking place this week, a full listing can be found on the homepage of our district website. Many of our athletic teams will still be working hard over the winter break. We invite you to come out and cheer on our Purple Knights at any of the sporting events taking place over winter break. There are many events happening all around our district. We encourage you to watch our district website at www.bloitschools.net and Facebook pages for more information. On behalf of the Board of Education and all the employees of the school district of Beloit, we wish the entire community a safe, happy, and warm holiday season. This concludes tonight's announcements.
Alright, recognitions up next.
Well, good evening. Each fall, the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, otherwise known as DPI, issues accountability report cards for schools and districts in the state of Wisconsin. These report cards help parents and educators to understand how their school is doing, as well as where it can improve to help all of our children learn, advance to the next grade, and graduate ready for college and career. Our goal is for every student in the school district of Beloit to graduate and to be ready to pursue further education and a career. The report cards are designed to inform parents and the community and to drive our discussion about our students' learning. The district has been extremely dedicated to improving student performance, and we're starting to see that reflected in our state report cards. Now, we will be the first to admit that our work is not done, and the increases that we are seeing on our state report cards demonstrates that our efforts of our students and our staff are really starting to pay off. We will keep forging ahead until all of our schools exceed state expectations, and we truly become a first-choice district for all students and all families. Tonight, we want to recognize seven of our schools, six of which have increased the scores on their state report card, and one who remains a school who exceeds state expectations. So to help me in recognitions tonight, I'd like to introduce Assistant Superintendent of Teaching, Learning, and Innovation, Mr. Anthony Bonds.
Good evening, everyone. It gives me great pleasure to recognize the schools have increased their students' overall performance. As a district, we are truly focused on improving outcomes for all students. At the beginning of each year, the district and all schools are required to create improvement plans in the area of reading, math, instructional quality in all content areas, plans to close the achievement and opportunities gap for underperforming groups of students, plans to improve family and community engagement, plans to improve the learning environment in the classroom and throughout the school, and we are required to follow a cycle of continuous improvement, better known as Plan Do Study Act cycles. Research shows, schools that follow a well-developed process for improvement tend to make greater gains and have better student performance. I am pleased to say that seven out of our 11 schools made gains last year or met expectations. I'm also from... You're right. Congratulations. I'm also a believer that schools, their teachers, and principals should be recognized and celebrated just as much as we scrutinize and hold them accountable for student success or lack thereof. This is our moment to recognize and celebrate them and to hear from them. We had two schools that increased their points in their report cards. Beloit Memorial High School increased by .1 point, and Gaston Elementary School increased by .2 points. If those principals would like to come up?
Good evening, I'm Janee Banks Wilson, one of the assistant principals at the high school. And some of the efforts that we focused on last year was increasing student attendance, getting students in the building, more students, increasing or maximizing their instructional minutes. So that was one of our main focuses. We also added an academic lab to each student's schedule that would allow them to get additional help from teachers, as well as provide them with additional time to get things done, to complete more tasks, and really enrich their learning experiences outside of the traditional block that they would have that class for, as well as many other things, but those are just a few things that we felt helped us increase our scores.
Hello, Brandy Herford, principal at Gaston Elementary School. I wanted to say that, first of all, we always start our morning out at about 4:30 with some prayer. So I text my guidance counselor, and she gets the prayer right for the day. So I would attest that to one of our things, for one of our growth. Besides that, I would also say our growth mindset, our CLC grant, our fidelity of implementation walkthroughs, the staff looking at different things like test prep with the students in terms of literacy and math, and our PBIS and making connections with our students.
Thank you. There were three schools that increased their points and moved to the higher rating of meets fewer, meets expectations from fewer expectations. Let me repeat that. There were three schools that increased their points and moved to the area of meets expectations from the area that meets few expectations. They are Aldrich Intermediate School increased by 5.1 points, Hackett Elementary School could not be in attendance, they increased their overall points by 9.5 points, Robinson Elementary School increased by 11.1 points. So congratulations to all three schools.
Hi, I'm Joe Rydax, I'm the principal at Aldrich. I'm going to ask two of my representatives from the leadership team to step in front of the podium. I've heard that's where the camera is, and so they need to be front and center.
Where are your bodyguards, baby?
I hear refusal, is that insubordination? I'm asking them, you know, to come up here nicely. That's alright. They can stay in the background because they are humble gentlemen and they do a lot of work. I'm going to get around to the leadership team in just a minute. But what do I attribute the growth to? A few things. First of all, if you could think about a testing environment. We changed the testing environment last year for the forward exam. I had somebody dedicated to make up exams, people that missed the test. If that's 70 kids and there's a controlled environment where one person who's not a teacher is brought in, a former teacher, Jen Sheevy, did a great job running that room. She had her own classroom, and she made sure that those testing situations where kids missed the test and had to take them on another day were running like a machine. And so, to me, that's worth points on those tests. Also, with the actual testing environment in every classroom, we focused on making that a place where kids can focus and think and have the time they need to process what they need to do a better job. That's also worth points on that test. So those things were great. When you talk about our improvement plan, what did we focus on? And in the academic area, we focused on making sure that we were implementing our universal curriculum with fidelity in both literacy and math. With math, that's a pointed focus on guided math, which reduces a 40-minute whole group instruction to about 20, and then gets the kids into groups working on reteaching, working on different aspects of the lesson that they heard that day. In my mind, that is the single greatest factor for any growth in math that we're going to have over the next few years in Aldrich. So when I think about that, the last thing I want to close with is I have a great staff at Aldrich. These two guys represent the leadership team, who I give, I try to give as much opportunity to lead in as many different ways as I can. They are responsible for working with our PLCs in a way that I feel is dynamic and truly remarkable. Anybody that would like to come see them, we have one Wednesday night from 4:00 to 5:30, and you're going to see dynamic teachers working together to get better, to talk about what they can do to improve student performance. So those are exciting things, and I would also like to thank the board because whoever's idea that was to drop four to five times a month of PLCs to two times, which are exactly the same for all the intermediates, that was pure genius. And that's going to provide a great process, great dynamic system for us to continue that growth. So, in closing, great staff, people working together, committed to kids, working to give their time and their energy to make things work at Aldrich. That's the growth. Thank you for the time.
Good evening, Sam Carter, principal at Robinson Elementary School. We attribute our success to a professional learning community and an entire community, and leadership at a variety of levels. Leadership at home, starting with the parents as the children's first teacher, and making connections with family nights at our school. We attribute to having 4K back in the buildings and having a fantastic 4K staff that begins those early literacy strategies at four years old and moves on to kindergarten and first grade, as well as all the instruction, the leadership from the district office with professional learning communities, site improvement plans, and our walkthroughs and our new curriculum, and the leadership of my third-grade team that gets the kids ready for that year and really takes care of that testing environment. But it's an all-around community effort, and we feel we have a great learning community at Robinson, which includes all of our families as well as our teachers and kids. So it's really owed to a variety of people and a variety of efforts, and teachers that work tirelessly to try to give kids what they need. So, thank you for the recognition, and thank you to my staff.
Todd Elementary School increased points and continued to be a school that meets expectations two years in a row. They increased by 5.9 points, and we have a principal who would like to share some of her perspectives.
Hi, Melody Worgro, principal of Todd, and I do have Melissa Warback here, she's on my leadership team. I think the one thing that we've worked really hard on since I've been at Todd is building that community of learners with the staff, the parents, and the students. And we have strengthened our universal instruction because we knew that we had to get to the roots of how they learned to read and write. And then we strategically planned how we're going to teach them, what we're going to teach them, and we differentiate as needed, and they go into intervention groups. We have been lucky enough to have the CLC grant. This is our 16th year, so we have a lot of students that stay after school every day that we can give them additional support. We also implement PBIS routinely, which is help with the whole management piece, and just making Todd a fun place to be. So, part of the challenge is getting kids to want to be to school, come to school, and want to learn. And I have a great leadership team, and I also have a great staff. We have had, not a lot, we've had very little turnover, to be honest with you, the last four or five years. So, we started with our strategic plan and worked backwards from that and tried to figure out what do we need to do to help these kids learn. So, thank you so much for the recognition. We were only .5 away from being exceeding expectations, so we're going to get there next year.
Lastly, I would like to recognize Converse Elementary School. For the second year in a row, Converse exceeded expectations on the state report card with a score of 81.5 points. They are the only school that has a four out of five stars this year, and we are so proud of them, so congratulations to Converse.
Hi, I'm Vicki Hamilton, I'm the principal at Converse Elementary. I could go on and on about what makes us great, because that's how we feel. The first thing, our students are like our own, and everybody in our building takes care of all of our kids. It's not just, these are mine, these are yours, they are ours. So we are a family at Converse. Second, our expectations are extremely high, and we all stick to that. We also, our instruction is forged by our data. We use our data to guide our instructions on everything, especially our day-to-day and our interventions. We work very hard to make our interventions fit, to close the gaps. So closing the gaps make the rest of everything else fall into place. At the beginning of the year, the first thing we do is hit our discipline. Because my philosophy to my staff is, if we get the discipline under control, they can learn. Everybody else can learn. Nobody will go under if we get the discipline under control. So we go into sit with discipline, first thing we hit. Our staff, my staff is giving a flow chart, we go over the flow chart for PBIS, and that is how our discipline works. So, it starts where it starts from and before it gets to me. So, my staff has great classroom management, and we work from our flow chart. So, what makes Converse who we are is because we're a family, and we all work together. And by the way, this is Mr. Klett Benji, he's my right-hand man. He's the only one here tonight, so I can say that. But, so I won't say that if everybody was here. But he is a first-grade teacher, and he is awesome. So, he's part of our family. We're not a team, we're a family.
So just wanted to say congratulations to all of our schools on their efforts. And I would be remiss not to remind the district, our board, and our community that we have shown a lot of growth in the district from the last two years. We are one point away from being a district that meets expectations. And I am confident that we will make growth and be a district that meets expectations. And I can put this on record as well. Within five years, we'll be a district that succeeds expectations. So, I'm really excited. Thank you.
I just wanted to let the board know that Hackett couldn't be here tonight, not because they're playing hooky, but it is their winter sing tonight. And so they have their entire school over at People's Church, and it's a packed house over there tonight. So Ryan does send his regrets that he couldn't be here tonight.
One second. So, Mr. Bonds, so that the public knows, we have 13 schools, right?
Yes.
And of those 13, I'm sorry.
14.
14. I forgot BLA, was it?
BLA, RCA, and Virtual.
Okay, 14. So the categories are, the first one is doesn't meet expectations, the lower one?
Yes.
Doesn't. What's the next one?
Meets few expectations.
Okay.
Meets expectations. Exceeds expectations. And significantly exceeds expectations.
Okay, how many do we have that don't meet expectations of the school?
Five. Yeah, it's one in the lowest. Could you repeat the question again?
What is, how many of the 14 schools do we have that doesn't meet expectations?
One.
One. What school is that?
That's Merrill Elementary School.
Okay. How many schools meets few? If you don't have that information, just say you don't have it.
I don't have it.
Okay, that's okay. I'll, you, because maybe you might want to put it on the website so that people have the full snapshot.
Yes.
Thank you for, this is positive reinforcement. Mrs. Worgro and Mrs. Hamilton, could you come up to the mic, please? Mic, please. There's nothing more important that the board can do than address academic achievement. And for the two and a half years that I've been on the board, I've lost a lot of sleepless nights because not only is this an issue in Beloit, but it's across the country. And you two are very humble individuals, very kind. And I want you to take a couple of minutes, and, well, first of all, I have an assignment for you, and it's a friendly assignment. And I want to see if you're up to the task, okay? I would like to schedule a time to meet with you two, and if you could meet with Mr. Bonds to look at that preliminary report on the recommendations that the committee's going to have for academic achievement. And the reason why I feel comfortable doing this is because I was the one that asked former President Anderson Levy to assemble the Academic Achievement Gap Committee. And so I'm going to be leaving in April, so I want to feel good about some things. Would you two be willing to have lunch with me so that we can talk about some things and I can pick your brain? Thank you. And so, what can, what'd you say?
It might not be lunchtime, but...
Coffee or dinner or something, okay?
Just hide it over the noon hour.
In a nutshell, with you not looking at anything, to be in the classifications of exceeds and meets expectations, from a macro perspective, what do you see us missing? The key ingredient that we're missing? From a district-wide perspective?
I think what we've worked on so much is fidelity of implementation of the resources that we have. Because for a while, it was really scattered. And so I think that even though we've complained as principals about all the FOI walks, I'll be honest, it does...
Help people know what FOI walks are.
Fidelity of Implementation Walks. And, but it helps people be accountable, and then it gives us a discussion point. Because if we go in and randomly do these fidelity walks, then we can sit down with our staff, say for example kindergarten, and say, okay, you should all sort of be at the same spot, you know, is there a reason you're not? Or is there a reason you're way ahead? It gives us a talking point with staff. I don't know what you think, Vicki.
And I agree with everything Melanie said, but I also think that we're missing, in our buildings, that's close-knit of being on one accord. Everybody needs to have the same mindset and the same expectations of everyone. That includes your custodian. Everybody needs to walk the same walk. As like Dr. Williams said, it's one thing, one fight. I mean, we're all working for the same cause, and I think that's a lot of what we're missing in places. We need that closeness and trusting of each other.
And I'm sure Mr. Bonds would feel comfortable joining us for that coffee or that dinner? Because I think that you all are on to something, and you have the ingredients, the active ingredients. The results prove it, and when someone's doing exceptionally well, it's smart to find out what they're doing and to spread that around. Excellent job, folks.
Thank you.
So oftentimes, we sit in this boardroom and listen to how, listen to the long list of what's wrong with our schools, listen to what's wrong with our students, and listen to what's wrong with our faculty. And I am so proud to be up here and congratulate all of you on the work that you have done. And notice, you know, we don't have a big audience today, which is a shame, because on the days that things go well, on the days that you're recognized for the work that you do, it would be great to have a full house in here. And so, know that we are all paying attention, and that the students that you are working with are the ones who are benefiting and the ones who are probably least able, except for maybe these high school students here, least able to say thank you on their own. So just know that your work is appreciated by the students, by the board, and by the community. Thank you so much.
Good evening. Let me just say, first and foremost, thank you for what you do inside of your buildings. As you know, I'm inside of your buildings all the time, and I see the great work that you do day in and day out. You know, we always tell people that the most important place inside of a school is inside the classroom. But leadership takes a part. The parents has a role to play, the students, they all have a role to play. And when we all play our roles well, we all win. So I want to say thank you for tying the knot and bridging that gap between those entities to get the growth that you all have right now. It does my heart good to say, to hear from you all, that the Fidelity of Implementation Walks that we implemented a few years ago, you feel are working. Because that was the concern at one point in time that someone brought up. But I want to say thank you for being steadfast, using the practice, but mainly getting the results. So thank you.
Doctor, excuse me, Dr. Williams, could you tell the public what the Fidelity of Walks consists of?
The Fidelity of Implementation Walks, that's when there's a team, multiple levels. There's a team that goes out from the district to actually look at what goes on inside of the classroom. It's a great instructional practice. So it's really to help the staff members inside of the school to become better. It's not any value to tool, it's to go out and when we have professional development on a particular practice, whether it's in reading or in math, they go out and actually make sure that it's happening and make sure that the teachers feel comfortable. Then at the school level, the principal, maybe there's a leadership team that go out and work with the teachers as well. The goal is teacher improvement. It's not any value to peace, it's teacher improvement.
So where did that come from? You said it was just implemented a couple of years ago? Is there a model, or where'd it come from?
Well, that is, it's a great instructional practice. When we talk about using best practices, I mean, there's a lot of research out there. I mean, if you think about it, it's just a simple concept that whenever we have professional development, we want to go inside of the school to make sure that it actually takes place. And you often hear many times where there's professional development that takes place, but it's never implemented. So what's the value of the professional development? The Fidelity of Implementation Walks, there are tools, whether it's in math or reading, that the staff go out and they use to help inform instruction. There's conversation after the fact to help guide the instruction to improve student achievement inside the classroom. achievement inside the classroom.
I want to thank all of you. I have had the pleasure of visiting all of the schools over the last month, and I would encourage the public to visit our schools. If you want to witness dedication and hard work and a lot of fantastic kids, take a little bit of time, visit our schools, volunteer in them, be involved. You all do great work, and thank you for all that you do.
And I just wanted to make the community aware and the board aware that the school report cards are located on our district website. So, there are links to that if the community or the board would like to access them. Also, just wanted to also reinforce the fact that if parents and the community are looking for ways to support the schools, please contact your school principal. We can use your support. I know our teachers would appreciate that support as well. I know for a fact that we will not improve our students' performance without the support of our community and our families. So, thank you. Well job, principals.
Moving on, on the agenda items. Next up is citizens or delegations wishing to speak. Do I have anybody in the audience who wishes to speak? All right. Going once, going twice, seeing none. I am going to move on to superintendent's reports. Dr. Williams?
Good evening. We have two items under the superintendent's report tonight. There's been a lot of conversation about a topic we call the School to Prison Pipeline. And tonight, we have a presentation from Ms. Tasha Bell, Equity Coordinator for the School District of Beloit. And she's going to educate us on what that, educate us on the School to Prison Pipeline. And at this point in time, would you welcome Ms. Tasha Bell?
All right. Good evening. As Dr. Williams said, we will be discussing the School to Prison Pipeline. For brevity, I'm not going to read every single slide, but I'm going to attempt to highlight some of the various pieces and convey the narrative of what is the School to Prison Pipeline. So, our learning outcomes for tonight are to become familiar with the causes of the School to Prison Pipeline and its effects on students as well as our community. And we will also identify strategies to derail the School to Prison Pipeline. So, here is our School District of Beloit mission, which I am certain that we are all very well-versed in. It is important to begin this conversation that I frame it with some definitions around what equity means in education. So, this is the definition of equity used by Tony Evers, our state superintendent. Equity means that every learner has access to the resources and rigor they need at the right moment in their education despite race, gender, ethnicity, language, disability, family background, or family income. We also have another definition by the Great Lakes Equity Center. And it reads, educational equity is when educational policies, practices, interactions, and resources are representative of, constructed by, and responsive to all people such that each individual has access to, can meaningfully participate, and make progress in high-quality learning experiences that empowers them towards self-determination and reduces disparities in outcomes regardless of individual characteristics and cultural identities. Culturally relevant practices is defined by Gloria Lass and Billings as the pedagogy that empowers students intellectually, socially, emotionally, and politically by using cultural reference to impart knowledge, skills, and attitudes. Simply put, the children see themselves in their schooling. The life that they find valuing at home and in the community is reinforced in a real intangible way with, inside of our schools. The definition of social justice as defined by DPI. So, what exactly is the School to Prison Pipeline? It refers to the policies, the practices, and conditions that facilitate both the criminalization of educational environments and the processes by which this criminalization results in incarceration of youth and young adults. So, the statistics in this presentation are very important, and they show how disproportionately students of color and students of disabilities are disciplined. So, a brief history of what the School to Prison Pipeline looks like. In 2004, there were 3.3 million suspensions and 106 expulsions. African-American students are three times more likely to be suspended than whites. That was the case then and is still the case now in districts across the nation. There was the rise of zero tolerance policies. For example, in 1996 through 1997, 91% of public schools had a zero tolerance policy for weapons and guns. 87% of schools nationwide had a zero tolerance policy for alcohol. 88% of schools nationwide had zero tolerance policies for drugs. 79% of schools for violence and 79% for tobacco violations. There was also the Gun Free Schools Act of 1994, which mandated a one-year expulsion for bringing a firearm to school. So, boys represent about 54% of preschool enrollment, but they account for 79% of preschool children who are suspended once and 82% of students that are suspended multiple times. Students with disabilities are more than twice as likely to be suspended out of school at 13% versus the students without disabilities at only about 6%. With the exception of Latino and Asian-American students, more than one out of four boys of color with disabilities and nearly one in five girls with disabilities receives an out-of-school suspension. Students with disabilities represent about a 25% percentage of those referred to law enforcement and arrested, even though they only make up about 12% of the overall student Arrested schools represent the most direct route into the School to Prison Pipeline. So, the School to Prison Pipeline disproportionately affects students of color. Observed patterns of racial disproportion do not correlate with higher incidence of disruptive behavior by black students, but concluded that disproportionate minority contact in schools is due in part to the differential treatment of students of color by teachers and administrators. It is important to note that minorities, and not just racial minorities, suffer the greatest in the School to Prison Pipeline. For example, students with disabilities, although a small percentage of student population are disproportionate as well. So, what are the causes of the School to Prison Pipeline? There's three critical components. The zero tolerance policies, which include school suspensions and expulsions, as well as abandoning juveniles to the criminal justice system for offenses such as truancy and incorrigibility, which would not even be deemed offenses if they were adults, are frequently implemented in a pattern of institutional racism. Dropping out of school is not a spontaneous act of volition, but rather a cumulative process of victimization, which constitutes a push-out mechanism. Dropping out of school is a major predictor of incarceration. If students are not in school, they miss more than academics. They miss learning the societal norms, and this can lead to them being pushed out of schools. Students that drop out of school do not simply wake up in the morning and decide that I'm going to drop out today. They feel as if school is not the place for them. And they are constantly affirmed in that. And then, ultimately, they decide after many times of failing the systems that schools have in place, that dropping out is the best thing for them. And we know that that's a major predictor of incarceration and that they ultimately end up in prison. So, again, the policies part. Harsh policies that solely focus on discipline and do not get to the why of why students are acting out can push students into the School to Prison Pipeline. So, small infractions that in the past maybe would have led a student to the principal's office and a sharp warning, maybe even a detention, now become the basis for out-of-school suspension, expulsion, or increasingly, a trip down to the police station. Zero tolerance policies. Again, they are disciplinary policies that are used in school to punish selected offenses severely, no matter what the circumstances are, in order to send the message that these specified behaviors will not be tolerated. The problem with zero tolerance policies is that they fail to take into account the underlying causes of the student behavior. It disproportionately targets students of color, students of poverty, and students with disabilities. It doesn't provide students with the instruction that they need to be successful in school. Zero tolerance policies would expel students for weapons, alcohol, drugs, violence, et cetera. However, it was found that there was no clear-cut definition for a lot of things, such as what constitutes as a weapon. Small children were expelled for having something as simple as a nail clipper. These policies did not allow principals the chance to help students. Instead, it increased the number of students that were expelled across our nation. So, what is the role of the administrator versus the role of police within our schools? Who's in charge of classroom disruption? Who manages classroom management concern? Who issues disorderly conduct tickets? So, what do researchers suggest for ways to address and to begin to eliminate the School to Prison Pipeline? Looking at alternatives to zero tolerance policies, such as peer mediation and conflict resolution programs, must become the standard elements of public education. In order to deal with the student needs which go beyond the job description of classroom teachers, community schools must be developed that coordinate medical, psychiatric, counseling, and social work services. The problem of cultural insensitivity is exacerbated by the shortage of racial minority teachers can only be resolved by the reforms in teacher education programs that strike down barriers such as the practice exam and replaces them with programs of aggressive recruitment, retention, and comprehensive educational skills development. Researchers also recommend to develop and implement school-wide disciplinary plan and programs to engage parents in reinforcing positive behaviors at school, provide teachers with an ongoing positive classroom and behavior support system. So, if you can visualize a pipeline, you can see that once something is in the pipe, it's really hard to remove it. So, let's imagine something valuable, like a diamond ring falling down a drain. The ring is so valuable that you tell everybody in your house to stop. Nobody runs any water. We are going to call in the experts. We need to save this diamond ring. This is how we must envision the School to Prison Pipeline. We must stop everything that we are doing and truly evaluate to see what we're doing and how do we save this ring that is too valuable to lose, to be lost down the drain forever. So, now, we're going to look at home and the wonderful School District of Beloit to see how we're addressing the School to Prison Pipeline. So, some of the things that we have in place are we have academic achievement for all of our students, which constitutes offering ACT prep. We also have an African-American and Latino math mentors program that I'll talk about. We offer our high school students the ability to read to our primary schools. It allows them the chance to give back to the district that they're so proud of. We have participated in the "I Will Not Die Young" campaign. Culturally relevant teaching practices are very important. We have coaching provided for our teachers, professional development opportunities, and ongoing recruitment and retention. So, in Beloit, we've called in the experts such as Dr. Howard Fuller, Tim Weiss, Dr., I always mess this up, sorry, Dr. Nisarvia, to help our staff learn more ways to help derail the School to Prison Pipeline. Student engagement is one of the key pieces to eliminate in the School to Prison Pipeline. So, this is our African-American and Latino tutors and mentors program. This program allows some of our top African-American and Latino students to be mentors at schools across our district. We have learned that many of these students go into this program not necessarily interested in education, but they walk out considering it. And I think that's super important because it gives us the opportunity to provide our students and opportunity to give back to our own district with the goal of hopefully that they will return to Beloit and ultimately, our school district as well. Parental engagement is one of the ways to derail the School to Prison Pipeline. We are constantly looking at ways to meaningfully engage our parents. We host a monthly parent academy that is responsive to the needs of our parents. We have topics that parents ask for more information on. We also have monthly parent walkthroughs available at all of our school sites. Parents enjoy the opportunity to see inside of our schools. We continue to partner with local organizations that serve our Beloit community, and we are always open to new partnerships as well. We are working towards a comprehensive equity and recruitment and retention plan. We will continue to work on establishing quality relationships with historically black colleges and Hispanic-serving institutions as well. Our Grow Your Own Multicultural Teacher Scholarship. Last year, we raised over $44,000 to give out our first-ever Grow Your Own Multicultural Teacher Scholarship. We are so happy to have Gustavo, who is currently studying at Cardinal Stritch University to become a math teacher. Gustavo was also one of our mentors, and he loved it. A great time for him and something that if you ever have a chance to meet this young man, I definitely encourage you to do it. He'll tell you that the money will come later, and he wants to become a teacher. Truancy, another key piece to the School to Prison Pipeline. We worked with our local law enforcement agencies to eliminate truancy tickets. The tickets were ineffective and did not increase school attendance. We created an inter-juridicial team made up of school district personnel and community agencies that could help families get the resources they need to get their children to school. Several students that were not attending school for a variety of reasons have actually came back as a result of meeting with this team. We have seen a decrease in our expulsions overall since 2014. We continuously look for ways to engage our students that are expelled or on homebound to make sure that when the time comes for them to return to the district, that they are prepared to do so. Instruction drives discipline. So, we make sure that our staff is prepared each and every day to engage all of our learners. We believe that student leadership programs are a necessity to help students transform schools through student empowerment. So, the question that we must all answer is why? Why do we commit ourselves to the world of public education? The information in this presentation is meant to be a guide to begin to have the harder conversations. Thank you.
So, I don't really have a question so much as I want to put your presentation into context. So, there's a way that if an audience is watching this at home, they might understand what's happening in schools as sort of specific to schools and unique. So, the time period you started with in the 90s is, schools were part of a larger trend of zero tolerance in the broader society. So, it's not like schools were doing this on their own. And so, it seems to me that one of the things that comes up whenever we talk about discipline or different ways of trying to address this pipeline is that we get complaints from parents or community members who are sort of nostalgic for an old way of doing things. So, you know, when I was a kid, these are the pedagogies we used. When I was a kid, kids sat in their chairs and did what they were told. And the problem with that kind of nostalgia, as with any nostalgia, is that it kind of forgets the stuff that we don't want to remember. And so, we want to be careful that when we ask administrators or teachers to do things the old way, we recognize that there are some issues with the old way. And we want to make sure that we are keeping equity, not equality, but equity at the center. Because if we are doing that, then that's what's going to address this. So, we are keeping equity at the center of our pedagogies. We're keeping equity at the center of how we hire, hiring practices, of everything that we do, then it means that we are closing the gap, and closing the gap is what's going to reduce this. So, I really appreciate all this information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Anderson Levy, for the public, could you differentiate equity and equality so that they understand what you mean by that?
Sure. So, equality is kind of the way that many of us were taught when we were little. You know, treat everybody the way you want to be treated. Treat everybody the same. Equity is different than that. Equity means giving people what they need at a particular time. Equity means giving people what they need at a particular time. So if I'm treating... So can I use you students as my little guinea pigs for a second? So if I'm treating everybody the same, what I'm doing is I'm saying, "So all you three, six kids need $5 each," right? Equity would mean that I'm asking all of you what you actually need, and maybe a guy in the red shirt needs $6, but maybe this young woman over here in the black shirt needs $3. So equity is targeted, and it's getting kids or people what they need instead of trying to be, treat everybody the same.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the information. Great job.
Thank you.
Keep you at the podium, don't I?
I am still here. I am still here. So I would like to highlight some things since our last meeting that are happening within our equity plan. I think this is awesome because even though it's been a short period of time, there are still things that I'm able to present to you, which means that the equity plan is truly a living and working document. So last Friday, we hosted Alan Borsak. He's a former education reporter and a current senior fellow at Marquette University. And he presented a lot of good information for our staff. And he was super real, which I think the staff appreciated in terms of, "I just want to be real with you. I don't think that the world of education is going to see a huge windfall of a lot of money." But I want to be real with you to understand that this is what it looks like. So I think as a staff, we can appreciate someone presenting to us honestly. LULAC Junior and our LULAC Council at the high school volunteered at the Second Harvest Pantry, the mobile pantry that happens twice a month at the Masonic Temple on Grand. We had almost 40 students. And I would like to say that one of the clients came in and said, "This is the best group of students that we ever had here." So kudos to our students, kudos to the advisors of our LULAC Council and our LULAC Junior. Our students actually enjoyed it, and they said it's something that they would love to come back to do. We had a conversation before we got off the bus in terms of, "There's no income requirements to come to the pantry. You will see people that you know. That's the story of Beloit. We're here to help." The kids had an awesome time, and we will be going back. We had a meeting with the MEO reps, and I think for the first time ever, we have an MEO, which is the Minority Excellence Organization, in all of our schools. The high school has the longest-running MEO. But to see that our MEO reps in all of our schools decided that they would actually like to have a student organization was awesome. And what I found in that meeting is the students are begging to do things within the community. So we're looking towards the spring to do a large-scale MEO, bringing our students from all of our MEO organizations to do a community service project because all of the MEOs in each of our schools is looking forward to doing community service. Some schools have held food drives, some kids have had clothes drives, they've helped out victims in Mexico and Puerto Rico, et cetera. We combined the Equality in Parent Academy, and we discussed human trafficking. Again, this was something that was brought to us by our people in attendance that said, "This is a topic we really want to know more about." So we did change the time for this month, but we actually had a nice turnout of people who came for that event. We have announced our Martin Luther King Junior Essay winners, and they will be presenting at our breakfast on January 15th. If you are interested in tickets, they are $25. Please email me. We don't want you to miss this great event, and we are looking forward to once again showcasing the wonderful students within our school district. Thank you.
So I had the opportunity to attend the event on Friday. Alan Borsak?
Borsak, yes.
And to be honest with you, President Endris, I thought about you because you said something, and he highlighted it. And I would not have believed him. He referenced a report, the post-traumatic stress disorder, and how Rock County, if I understood it, was number one in Wisconsin. I couldn't believe it. And maybe we might want to get a copy of that report and look at the dynamics of that report. I couldn't believe that Rock County exceeded even Milwaukee.
Ms. Bell, thank you very much for that information. I also wanted to highlight that we received $500 from the Zeta Phi Beta Sorority for our Grow Your Own campaign. But I also want to just say thank you for the presentation. You know, one thing is to sit here and listen to the presentation and talk about the need for change and do nothing about the change. So on the slide, it says, "What is your why?" This is a one-team, one-fight effort, so it takes everybody. We didn't get in this, the school district or any other organization didn't get into this situation by themselves. So it's going to take everyone to take a all-hands-on-deck approach to help resolve this issue and to make this place, this world and our school district a better place for our kids. So for everybody in the audience and people watching, I don't want you to think that just because we sat here tonight and you heard the presentation and talked about the change, that the change has already taken place. It's going to take all of us who are watching to decide that we want to do something about it, and let's figure out the best way to work together to make it happen.
If I may, President Endris, I found it, Jen Pepke sent it. It's the ACE test, and if I could, it says, "The Adverse Childhood Experience Survey." Asked whether someone was exposed as a child to a number of factors. And this is the part that I found that was really interesting. In statewide results collected from 2011 to 2015, Rock County had the highest percentage of high-risk people who admitted to four or more ACE indicators as a share of the population, 24% versus a statewide average of 14%. It showed the fewest percentage with scores of zero, 31% versus 43%. The county's ACE scores are higher than the city of Milwaukee, which registered 20% with four-plus, although ACE score spiked within specific neighborhoods with concentrated unemployment. So him speaking to that and highlighting it was very powerful. Thank you.
Just to keep going, because you know, this is a topic of importance to me. We also know, based upon research, that early exposure to trauma changes brain development. So it's important that we tackle that, and that we recognize that, and that we get busy with it. So, yep. All right, moving on in the agenda to reports to the board. Can I have the student board member report, please?
All right. I've been walking through the hallways and hearing around, and apparently there are rumors about closing campus lunch completely. And what I've been told to say is that you already took it from the sophomores. And I don't know, it's just rumors, so I could be wrong, but I'm speaking for the students. So they're emphasizing if you take Opus Campus Lunch completely, it will restrict the students, restrict the students from having a bit of liberty during their day. And then if you're going to take it away, at least give the incoming students a heads-up. And moving on. I have a suggestion. So the goal here is to increase students' scores on tests, increase their work ethic and intrinsic motivation to keep pushing it forward in school. So I have a suggestion, like I mentioned in the meeting with Ms. Andres. We create this thing called discussion rooms, where we take academic lab, like Ms. Wilson mentioned, that we take the kids who excel in a certain level, place them in a room, and we get kids who need help in that certain subject to come in and walk and get help from the students in that room. So for instance, kids who are in calculus during their study hall time or academic time, academic lab time, they are placed in a classroom where they can sit and just do their work. However, if a student comes in who needs help in math, they can just come in, ask for their fellow peers' help. And this will create more opportunities of networking. It will help increase students interact with different types of people that they've probably never seen or talked to about. And it'll also can be a start of everlasting networking opportunities that can last beyond high school. And then, yeah, and also it will help students gain teaching skills, which Ms. Tasha Bell mentioned, how it's important to teach your children, and how I'm in the mentoring program too. And it's very uplifting to be having the opportunity to do that. All right, and next report is, I also want to emphasize to bring awareness to sexual harassment. I'm not saying it because it happens in Beloit. It happens everywhere. And I feel we need to bring awareness to sexual harassment from elementary, middle school, and all the way to high school. And I'm not saying because this is a Beloit thing. It's not a Beloit thing. I want to make it clear that this is a national thing. And we have to teach the girls about confidence. And we have to teach many people the values of an individual and how you need to respect one another. Because it's honestly disappointing as I walk down the street or walking down the hallways, the things people would say. And like I said, it's not just Beloit. It's the whole country. And I'd say we need to create resources and bring more, create and bring more resources to those who need it. So, and we have to explain to those who need, explain the signs of sexual harassment. Because through personal experiences, I didn't know the signs until high school. And since it's not a Beloit thing, it's a national problem. So let's be the first district to address it. Thank you.
So for anyone concerned about the future generation, I would encourage you to have lunch at Beloit Memorial High School and interact with our students, and you will be very confident on our future after that. So thank you. Good job. Moving on to the rest of the board reports. May I have the report for finance, transportation, and property, please?
We met on December 12th. Items of note, we had our annual audit presentation. We approved the Long-Term Capital Improvement Plan, which is a 10-year plan. Most importantly, the importance of Developing Fund 46, so that we have any funds that are available at the end of the year, that we could use those in the future, which is something we have not done in the past. We also had a report on the summer school financial report. And I know we were diligent about making some changes to the program for next year to hopefully increase the number of students that are in that program again. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Curriculum and instruction. Lisa, can you help us out with that since?
Okay, so this committee met on November 28th and again on December 12th. Or wait a minute, no, the minutes were from the 28th. So the end of November and last week. The meeting last, in the meeting last week, the committee got an update on the Beloit Memorial Academy formation planning. And there was some discussion about not just research about the benefits of academies, but also information from site visits and what the planning has been thus far and what the implementation might look like over time. There were no data reports, and then there was an update on the Academic Achievement Ad-Hoc Committee meeting, as well as future agenda items, the ad hoc committee recommendations for approval, and second step, child protective unit. Thank you.
Thank you. Much appreciated. Policy and personnel?
The Policy and Personnel Committee met on November 28th. The board approved an additional teacher at Todd Elementary School in order to deal with the increased caseload for special education students. We approved personnel recommendations. And some of the things that were added for future discussion was the Language Access Policy Plan, Policy 533 Rule 3, recommendations for employee hiring, transfer promotion, and future discussions on Policy 882.1, Use of Body Cameras on School Property. The Policy and Personnel Committee also met on December 12th. There was, we approved the November minutes. There was an additional allocation of a temporary, I'll say again, a temporary administrator at Beloit Memorial High School to deal with our academies. We had a couple of policies for consideration for first read, and that was Policy 830, the Public Use of School Facilities, and Policy 830 Rule 1. Ms. Salas, our Human Resource Director, gave an update on labor liaison updates. She attended a conference, and she's going to be giving a more comprehensive report on many of the recommendations that was given at that conference. And the for future discussion items, there will be an Equity Diversity in Recruitment, 2018-19 contracts, and the 500 Policies on Preemployment Drug Testing, and let's see here, Labor Liaison Update. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for approval of the consent list, please?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. Consent list carries on to business action items. May I have a motion for the annual audit presentation?
President Endris, I move approval of the annual audit presentation, budget adjustments as well. B and C.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. Motion carries for approval of the annual audit presentation and budget adjustments. May I have a motion for the temporary administrator position for academy planning at BMHS?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. Motion carries to approve temporary administrator position for academy planning at BMHS.
President Endris, I would move approval of ENF Policy 30, Public Use, Policy 481, Work Permits.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries for approval of Policy 830, Public Use of School Facilities, and Policy 830 Rule 1, Use of School Facilities Regulations, Policy 481, Work Permits, second reading. May I have a motion to approve personnel recommendations, please?
I move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. Motion carries for approval of the personnel recommendations. Moving on to discussion items, are there any items of interest for consideration at future meetings?
Yes. Mr. Bonds, could, I'm sorry, it is, her name escapes me, the new data person. Mrs. Chaney. Could you have Mrs. Chaney construct a five-year longitudinal data for all of the 14 schools and take that data from the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction for the report card? And if you could give us the five-year numbers for that five years so that we can see if scores are going up and down, that would be very informative for the board. Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to announcements of future board meeting dates. Committee meetings will be January 9th. Finance, Transportation, and Property, Curriculum and Instruction, and Policy and Personnel. The next business meeting will be January 23rd. And with that, I would like to adjourn this meeting. Thank you. Thank you.